Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
All right, we will call the meeting to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Minutes from prior meeting, I'll make a motion that we accept.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Public comment, if we can hold it down to less than three minutes, I would be good. Sandy?
No.
Tom?
No.
Do you want me to do mine under public comment?
No, we got a special. Okay, please.
Just want to thank the road crew for grooming the Reed Road Sunday night going into Monday morning. I mean, it was disheartening, Reed Road had just disintegrated into ruts over the weekend. It's funny, I never hear them go by at night, but I come down Monday morning and the road's all smoothed out again, and the temperature is below freezing, so hardened up. I deeply appreciate that.
All right.
We wanted to bring before the board possible articles that have...
Why don't we hold off on that until we get to the part making the warning?
Okay.
Yeah, let me take a little bit. Anything, public comments?
The only thing I have was, the youth group asked if they could use the school when the Grafton School was not available.
I don't see any problem with that.
Didn't we make a motion?
It'll be Darlene, she'll be the one doing it.
Oh, okay, so I have the authority to say yes or no.
Yeah, we made that motion.
Okay. I wasn't sure about that.
It was in that policy. Yep, so, yeah. You can do that. All right, town board's an official, Sandy?
No. I see on the warrant, I mean, the agenda, there's a finalizing budget, you want to wait on that until?
Yes.
Okay.
Tom?
No.
Town board's an official. Anna?
No.
Lynn? Town board's an official, not that, but anything from the school, nothing? Okay. And nothing. All right. Walker Road. Allen is going to be representing the Grafton Improvement Society?
Grafton Improvement Association.
Association.
My name is Al Sands from Grafton, and we have 840 acres of Grafton Improvement Association land, which primarily the funds from timber sales are used to do things for improving the town of Grafton, and lately that's been giving scholarships to young people for college. It originally started to mark the graves of soldiers in World War I, and has also continued to mark veterans' graves. But timber sales is our primary source of revenue, and we've had some accesses in the past that have worked, and some of those have changed because of state regulations, we no longer can ford a river, and those sorts of things. So I'm coming to see if it would be possible to utilize the Walker Road as an access. It's my understanding that it has been used as a logging or logging access for trucking in the past. We would be, our goal would be to load the trucks on GIA land and be bringing loaded trucks out on Walker Road. We would not be skidding and dragging material on the Walker Road. So, I know it's been done in the past...
Whose property would you have to go over to get to Walker Road? Because the Improvement Association doesn't come right to that.
That's correct. We have to cross a piece of land that's owned by Pinnacle Ridge, and I've talked to a couple of their board members, and they don't have a problem with us doing that. So, it's a right, it is a right-of-way, a legal right-of-way for us in Grafton side, so it's a matter of whether your road is a right-of-way that we can also use.
Well, it's a point, you get up in there, it's a Class IV road, my understanding, and then it sort of returns to Class III. How much, how many loads do you think, and what time of the year and things will be?
We would be, at least initially, it would be winter road. We were hoping that we could, and the weather and some other things that haven't worked out, I'm guessing we'll operate part of our sale and take timber to the north that won't be on Walker Road. And I'm actually looking, probably Walker Road, something that would happen next winter. But we realize things go slow, and so we're looking to get to Mission and invest some money in fixing up the road on the Grafton side, and I expect we'll have to do some work on Athens end of the Walker Road as well.
Is this going to be just for that one year, or do you plan to use it?
We have another timber sale scheduled, it's probably four or five years out, and that timber sale is actually closer to Athens, so that would also be likely and logical to come out off the Walker Road as well. So we're trying to look at things a little more long-term. So investing some money in the road now that we could use again later. Well, I understand that Class III road is what you would maintain, and the Class IV road, we don't expect maintenance on your cart, but we just want to make sure it's legal for us to use it.
I believe, I don't think there's really anything that we can do to not allow you to do that.
I think, truth be known, that's correct, but I would ask...
Sure. I mean, I would encourage you to get, have your logger get with the road crew and stuff if it's not, you know, froze up enough, and...
I'm on the select board in Grafton, so I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, but just to, just to run it through that.
And I know that a lot of that, Walker Road is a south aspect, so that it probably softens up early, and probably going to not be able to truck there in the spring of the year where you might someplace outside on the north aspect. If it's not too much to ask, because it is a long-term thing, would you mind putting something in writing that just states really the obvious, that it's a Class III and Class IV road, and if you have conditions that you would want us to follow? You know, if it's contacting the highway or crew?
Keeping it, at least keeping in touch with it.
Yeah, no, I would, but I'm just saying, if you have any, any real criteria that you want followed, I, sometimes it's nice when things are in writing, and if it's two years from now and I'm not involved, or you're not involved, if what was decided on is documented.
Is that reasonable with you?
That is reasonable with me. My concern is, and I, and I know you want to get things done in advance, is four or five years down the road, what, what is that road going to be like? Is it still going to, I'm sure it's still going to be a Class III, I can't guarantee it, but I'm sure it is, but, you know, the property owners or so on and so forth might change hands, and so things might change. It's not that we're not willing to look that far out, but...
I understand, but to me, the first step is getting the permission by the town, and unless you change classifications or throw the road up, access shouldn't change. You might have a grumpy landowner, I get that, but as far as an access, it should stay the same thing.
Some of that road, like way on the end of it, it's really bad shape. What are you going to do? Is this to get your log truck way back to the end?
Our, our goal is to get the log truck off from the town of Athens onto GIA land, and have our landing on GIA land, so the trucks would be loaded there. So, it may require...
It might require a log.
It may require pulling a couple of trees, and pulling some stumps, and putting some gravel in. I understand that. But the good news is, we don't have to cross the river there. That's been our issue to the north. So, and it's been, I've, I've tried to tell GIA for quite a while that we should be looking long-term, and I think finally, through all these false starts, they're finally realizing, yeah, we need to look at this differently. So, yeah, we know it's going to require some, but I also know that, you know, with Bob Wright from Du Fein, when he logged several years ago, he, he was able to fix the road up, do what we're proposing, so I do know it's possible.
All right, we will get a letter together then, saying that we understand that you're going to be logging up in there and using the Walker Road, and just, we'll just put in there that we'd like you to, whoever's logging, to have contact with the road crew and work with that.
Totally reasonable. So you could send that attention, Al Sands, GIA, at Grafton Town Hall.
Okay. Sandy, did you get that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else concerning that? All right, we'll move on to Taylor Hill. We've got the list of everybody. The list of everybody for it, of landowners or people that have an interest, or corporations that have an interest in it. And talked to our attorney, and he indicated to set the date, and we will be sending notices out for the hearing on that. Do we... No, but... February 27th, would that work? That's a Thursday.
I assume it does.
Is that what that would be? Because we need to, we need to give them a notice, and we have to do it in the paper. 3:00 o'clock, Mark? Because we have to go out to the road, we would meet out there.
All right, I was having to take off. Yeah, Thursday's the best day.
I mean, we change it to another day, but we do have to get out there.
Wednesday, we do that.
Okay.
Wednesday.
Yeah. 26th, ended up. All right. So why don't you make a motion to have the hearing on the 26th? I will make a motion to have the hearing on the petition for Taylor Hill Road on February 26th at 3:00. We will meet at the town garage, view the road, and then the meeting, the hearing will be adjourned back to the town office for the completion of the hearing. Is there a second?
One second, that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sandy, do you have something that you want to do?
No, I just wanted to have an update on what was going on on Taylor Hill. Once that hearing is done, then how long is it after that? 30 days, correct?
I believe we have to give a, we'll have the hearing, and then, I'm not sure how many days it is after that, but I hope we then have to come up with a, a plan at that point. I would thank you, I will check on how many days after the hearing. All right, anything else you'd like to go? All right, we will move on to finalize in the 2020 budget. And the warning for the 2020 town meeting. In the agenda, it was posted as 2019, but that has passed.
Could I comment on the warrant that the school would like to participate in that discussion, or do they have some article they would like?
Yep.
I think I can streamline that whole discussion based on what I learned today.
All right. Now, this is, this is going to be to deal with the 2020 town meeting warning.
Correct.
And the school had a motion that they wanted to put in, that Allen's got some information from his attorney.
I'm on the select board in Grafton, and so we're dealing with the same issue that, you know, Jack and Lynn, that Lynn are here to talk about. And I have information that we got today from our town attorney, which I think will make this whole thing go much quicker. And I think the easiest thing is, I'll just read it to you.
Okay.
So this is an email to the, to the select board members from our town administrator. Robin should send an email soon regarding opinion on articles that relates to the warrant town meeting. And so he's summarizing for us what she's going to follow in her legal lead. But it says, "The commission can be declared and set up by the select board. The proposal is a committee, and it would be voted on from, at the town meeting, from the floor. Recommendation is, instead of a committee, it's a commission. And because it's a commission, then the select board appoints the people, and obviously they would, you know, get names and all that sort of thing. But because the select board does it, you don't have to go through the whole process of putting it on the warrant, you don't have to do all that. So all you have to do is agree or promise that you're going to do this." And this is set up by the select board, and she recommends that, follow that procedure rather than going through the voters. And these commissions are set up, state law that authorizes you to do that is Title 24 VSA, and it's Section 4433, if you want to look it up.
So what's Title 24?
Title 24 VSA, 4433. 4433. And that authorizes the select board to appoint a commission, and you pick the people or appoint the people that should be on it.
Because I think if we try to vote on the article, then it would be difficult to be able to vote on the people at the same meeting.
I understand. So this is actually a simpler, easier way, I mean, you can still get input from your people in town, who should be on it, and who know who should be on it.
Yep.
But it's, it's much easier that way.
All right. So, Jack, why don't you explain to us just what it is that you want, and what Grafton's doing, Westminster's doing, and hopefully do.
Right. As people know, we have a consolidated school board that, whose existence is still somewhat disputed, we just had the discussion before the Supreme Court yesterday. But should the, should the court not rule in our favor, but sustain the district court, we are facing a consolidated district, and towns like Grafton, towns like Athens, and even Westminster have reason to be concerned, are their voices going to be heard in this, in this new district? We're developing a decentralized model, but it will, but it depends, in order to work, it depends on having, have some sort of advisory commission or committee at the individual town level, so that we can make sure that the three towns have an individual voice on what happens. So this is the one strategy we have for doing that. It's also a way to give the small towns in the district an opportunity to discover people that might want to serve on that unified board, so that your voices continue on into the future. That essentially, this is a way of creating training wheels, if you will, for future board members.
So irregardless of whether we win or lose the case, Athens at all...
Yeah.
This board, this commission would be there and try and assist the school board.
Right. And, and this becomes really important, because, you know, we could win, and if we do, both Grafton and Athens in particular, and actually this extends to Westminster, are going to have trouble just reconstituting their boards, because you have people that are, whose terms are, are ending this, this March, and you have people in, on all three communities that have resigned for various reasons, and it will take a little doing to reconstitute these boards, should we win, and this will give us a chance to fill in those, those positions, or at least have some ideas to who we should be looking for to fill those positions.
Well, another question that I had, will we be voting on people for the Unified District at town meeting this year?
You will not. The, unless, unless we win. But if we don't, or it's still being held up, because sometimes courts can take three or four months to, to generate a decision, we will have a district-wide meeting, much like the high school has a district-wide meeting, much like the meeting that we had last July, but we would be having that after all town meetings are done. Our target date is April 9th, for some technical reasons involving the school system, and we would have that, and it would be a vote, it would be a meeting of the community, like town meetings, except it'd be three towns all together, all the votes mixed together, everybody, it'll like it was one large town, if you will.
So that will be for the budget and for the directors?
That would be for the budget and the directors, at least for one year.
And going forward from there, do you know if we will vote individually on our directors from town?
One of the things that we are still working out is how the representation will work. There's a couple of models. One is a model where we divvy up the three towns into districts, and that's one model. The other model is to have a, have everybody elected at large, and there's a third model, one I'm fond of, that has an at-large vote, but reserves positions by town. This means that everybody gets to vote on Athens reps, but it guarantees that there are Athens reps. And that model would be helped immensely if there were already people that had been nominated by the community to serve as their, their reps, because at least there'd be some recognition that there were, that there were people that they ought to vote for, because I'm going to guess that maybe not everybody in Westminster knows folks in Athens all that well, or knows a lot of them. This is a way of trying to amplify our voice as much as I can.
Now, would you have the figures as to what a unified budget will be like for town meetings, so that the people here, in Grafton and Westminster, will have some idea what their taxes are going to be?
I anticipate having material for both the traditional pre-town meeting in Grafton and the Athens meeting. It may not be precise down to the dollar. The reason for that is the, the state, even this week, modified some of the numbers that we were going to use, and candidly, you may have heard that there were some really horrendous software issues that affected the school systems, and it became clear that not all the schools were going to get their budgets out on time. Since we had, we're the one town, or we were the one district that had an option about when to set the date, we set the date in April as opposed to setting it in March, that was the reason for that. I will, I'm here to send you a report and give you the numbers such as we have them. I should, I'm anticipating by the end of this month, having solid numbers, but, you know, they're off $50 one way or the other, you know, I'm hoping you'll indulge me with that.
Can I clarify? So you're saying that at town meeting, we elect our officials, that we don't need to elect a school board?
You don't have a school district.
Right.
Therefore, there's nobody to, there's no, but there's no one to elect anyone to.
Okay.
And because, we are still operating on the interim Articles of Agreement, and that created a transitional board, a subset of your folks that each board elected back now more than a year ago. We're working with that, but we believe that in that April meeting, it's our expectation that we will have a new Articles of Agreement, and we, and at least for that first year, we'll take nominations for those positions from the floor. How those nominations will be presented will be a dependency of the, of the Articles. As I said, my hope is that what we'll do is have at-large reserve seats, and we may change it in the following years, depending on what the sentiment is of the meeting. It's my belief that's the easiest way, and it's also a way that provides the most continuity from the system we have now, and I hope protects the small towns for at least, for at least another year.
Will, will the Unified District have a write-up for our town report, or for all the town reports? Just laying out what, what has happened, and what will happen, and just like a page?
I have a draft, I have a draft, and then I'm going to be giving it to the individual members of the, of the town members of our, of our transitional board, to make certain that they're comfortable with it, and I'll submit it along with me.
And that has to be in by the 25th?
25th.
Yeah.
Only later than that. So it would, it would probably helpful just to let everybody know that, and just...
Yeah.
Our goal is to have something in.
Yeah, as I said, I've got a, I've got a draft, but I don't have the numbers punched in, and I haven't had Lynn and Charles look at it yet, and I'll have that happen shortly.
You were going to email us the article and stuff, but maybe you can work with Sandy there, she can take down what the wording was that you were going to...
Actually, we even have a modified version of it that, that Lynn has, that we got back from Larry Prusak, I guess, what, today, yesterday?
Larry Slayson.
Wait, Larry Slayson, excuse me.
And that would have the changes that...
It does not have his changes, that, that's news to me.
Okay.
That just happened today.
Yeah. Maybe we'll make, can you make a copy of it for us, and then we'll scratch it up?
Been a lot of moving parts in this.
This one, if I could step in, I talked with Larry Slayson today, gave his advice on presenting this, and he's wanted to let the folks know that Westminster took a little different version of this, that gave the committee more power, that he does not recommend that, he recommended this version, which is what he wrote up. And he said it is appropriate to either elect or select, have the select board appoint, if you were to go this way, so evidently the committee, you can go either way, for him, Larry. So evidently, the committee, you can go either way for him, Larry.
But you say a commission is the word to you.
Yeah, according to your lawyer, commission may be a better word.
And my guess is, there was a conversation between the Grafton attorney and Larry that happened after you talked.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm guessing happened.
So my question is, all three towns don't need to have the same article?
It would be really nice, but we're, but, you know, the, from my perspective, the only thing that we need, that, that the district needs, the new school district needs, is it needs to know in its Articles of Agreement that there exists a commission, committee, whatever, that we can go to, because we may ask them to do things. And I need those committees slash commissions to exist on April so that we can put that part of the Articles of Agreement into effect. The, the idea here is, in fact, very consciously to have a separation of powers, because I can't, as a school district, create three school districts under me, but I can do this other thing through these committees that give, that will allow us to devolve a little bit of authority and at least make certain voices are heard.
Could I see the, the one that you had written up yourself there, too?
Yeah, yeah, hold on. I actually prefer Lynn's language, but here's what I have.
Are you interested in a copy of what Westminster did?
Yeah. And, and I would recommend against that because it, it gives its enumerated powers that it can't give based on Act 46. And we did explain that to the gentleman who petitioned it that way, but whatever.
But that's almost what this is.
Almost. That one gives more authority to the commission.
Yeah. The thing is, school, towns cannot take power to educate. School districts can. And the language that I was uncomfortable with, that Larry was uncomfortable with, made it sound like the town of Westminster was taking on some of the business of education that it can't really do legally. And my expectation is that when that comes up at town meeting, we'll ask the town meeting in Westminster to swap out the language. You know, not, it's, it's, it's a minor edit, but it's important, because as you all know, we're not real, we're not regarded with a great deal of fairness by the agency of education these days, because we cost them a lot of money, because we sue them.
They cost us a lot of money as well.
Well, happily, happily, most of the money's been volunteered for, for the litigation that's going on. But, yeah. And as a consequence, we really don't want to give the state entree to try to unwind our new Articles of Agreement or anything else. And I'm trying to make certain that we cover, cover ourselves. We've been successful so far, and I'd like it to stay that way. As I say, I would defer to Larry's language, because it's, it's later than mine, and...
Well, yeah, but some of it we need to change up here. To see if the voters of the town of Athens will approve formation of an Athens School Advisory Commission.
David, if you go with what Robin, our attorney, said today, you wouldn't be doing that. The Select Board would be doing it.
Yes.
So you don't need a...
Well, wait a minute, let me...
No, I understand, I just wanted to make it clear.
To see if the town of Athens will approve the formation of an Athens School Advisory Commission consisting of three members to be appointed by the Select Board, to be appointed by the Select Board, and it's to be called the Athens Educational Advisory Commission to advise the Unified District on budget, facilities, and other matters of interest. Is that reasonable to anybody?
I'm pretty sure any.
Good with you?
Yeah.
All right. To...
So the Westminster actually specifies to elect five members, five members elected to the town meeting, and two members to serve three-year terms, and three members to serve... So they've lined out in, in their article.
Mm-hmm. And the, and the draft that I gave Grafton initially, it had one years, because we really didn't know if we needed anything at more than a year, because we were kind of hoping that the whole district wouldn't be there in a year.
But if, if Westminster were to do that, it sounds like they would have to then have a special town meeting to vote that, because they vote by Australian ballot.
They have elected, they elected their, their school board members by, on, on the floor last, last year, if I recall. They, they elect, they elect, they elect their high school folks by, by ballot. But I don't, but I believe that, I know at least two of them, I believe, were elected by the floor last year, and they also voted, they vote their, they voted for their town budget by the floor.
They vote the budget by the floor, I believe, when I checked their offices.
I'll defer, I'll defer to you, I'll defer to you, because...
I stay away from Westminster town meetings, so I don't know that.
Well, we're all trying to get to know each other a whole lot better, at least for a while.
All right. So we will get the exact wording done on that, just to be sure that Sandy will make it up here for us, and we'll put that in.
And thank you all for this, this was the last one, and I appreciate the help.
Is that what you're doing with the town report?
No, we're going to put it into an article, I'm going to make an article of it.
Oh, make a reference to the town report, so people...
Well, hopefully, there'll be a write-up from the school, the Unified School, and just telling everybody where we stand and how we're going forward.
And mention in that the commission will be appointed?
That's what the article is going to say, appointed, a commission's going to be appointed. If they approve this article, the way we're putting it in...
Oh, okay.
It will be appointed by the Select Board.
So we're putting an article in?
We're putting an article to be had at our town meeting, but I'd like a, a write-up from the Unified School District for the town report, just to let people know where we are.
What occurs is going on, that's fair. And as I say, I've got a draft, so we'll tidy it up and get it to you next year, too.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask in this report to account for how we got from, last I knew, the state had required us to have a, an organization, a district organizational meeting, and that, and that meeting didn't even make it past the first two articles, it went into recess.
This, this new meeting will essentially, this April meeting, will do that. This would be very similar to what would have happened last year, had the voters, had the members of that meeting wanted to go that far.
Well, I, I understand that we have to have some mercy on our business office, and you can't do what we want to do as a supervisory union and then have this Unified District at the same time, trying to address my comments to the chairman.
I will take any note you might send me, and I'll sort it incorporated.
Yeah. So, so David, I don't, I don't know how we got to this, to this Unified District when the voters have not participated in it at all. As it stood last town meeting, we, we elected our, our, our school board members. Now, if the members only met, had a brief meeting once a year to appoint representatives to this district, temporary district meeting, I mean, that's fine, but I don't see why, we're not continuing to fulfill our, fill our three vacancies to our K through W board.
I, I think, because the state of Vermont says we do not, there's no longer an Athens School District, I think to be voting on a school board for a district that doesn't exist anymore, I'm thinking that that's going to put us in a...
I guess, I guess that's what I missed.
Yeah. The state normalized it.
State, state normalized you, where in fact, it put you, put us out of business as of December 31st. The Transitional Board was empowered, with reps from each of the old boards, was empowered to conduct business. We did that, we, that's how we had a budget approved in July, and we asked at that time to confirm the members in their positions, and the state allowed us to do that, and voters at that meeting allowed us to do that, and that's how we're able to provide you with a budget this year. And I just want to get us off the transitional business and into something that's a more supportable, long-term structure.
Anything else? Anybody have any other questions or comments about this? All right. When we make up our warning, we will go from there, and we'll have that in there.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And like I say, I think a report would be good for everybody.
You're mindful of that.
All right.
I was wondering, would it be possible, once you get it written up for the article, if you could send me a copy of that? I'd like to just...
If you want to wait just a little bit, and Sandy will be...
I'm writing as fast as I can.
That's okay, I don't need, I don't need it right then.
Let's see, see me after all.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
So hopefully, we'll have it here before the end of the meeting, we'll have it right now. All right. We'll move off from the warning now and go on to the finalizing the 2020 budget, the Budget Committee wants to come up, and we can go with that. People want to escape, this is the time to do that, and we'll take it.
There's a few things that you could ask then. So now I have the final numbers, what's the plus? Is, or that top section, the bottom line, so just fifty-six thousand nine forty-seven? And that number includes, just the operating surplus of the year, because of that, and twenty-five hundred dollars that we're cutting off, the rolling surplus. So we should have...
The alternative...
And then, we put a number in for the, for the, how is it going with getting the town?
I haven't even talked, you know, but I've been, I've been through that, I've got a list here.
So we've cut the budget for that, so we have it now.
I have it, and they have a list to do every area.
So your budget is fifty bucks a month to figure out telephone situations.
I will take care of that.
Six hundred dollars for years.
Technically, you just have no phone service up there, and when we have meetings up there, we should bring the wireless phone up for this.
But if we, if, if they won't do everything, we'll just shut that off and leave it as like a 911 call.
Amber had a hot phone for their business that just raised it on our location, it sounds like, for forty-something dollars. She said it was like thirty-one dollars, plus you got your taxes. We rounded it up to, yeah. So we rounded it up to fifty dollars, which is six hundred dollars. But hopefully, you can actually keep one line up there that actually... And then the other thing that we changed is, we added in seven thousand dollars to be put towards guardrails in the long-term highway projects allocation, which is the very last section, the last page, where we have transfers of other funds. Eleven thousand nine hundred, which is seven thousand for guardrails, and four thousand five hundred to be put towards the bridge. So other than that, everything is as taught, and the top number, what we need to get raised taxes, or five, ninety-one forty, does not include bathroom destruction in the town garage or any motive. Out of all...
Now, I have written up...
I have to look for it, I couldn't find it, please, if you could get down. No, you can just stay, just one. I know I don't have it.
You gotta make these just...
This, and then where is the warrant? I'll there it is.
That would be good to read over and see what they're asking. First, maybe what we're going to be at the budget committee meeting. So this is what we, I've written up a draft also to go over, and it is, we thought, which makes it more confusing to people, because that means sixty thousand is already accounted for in our revenue, so this makes it sound like we'd just be raising six thousand.
But we, to, to use that twenty-six, we really should have a vote on that, because that's nowhere, I mean, we'll just say that it's in the revenue that we have in this year, and that...
Yeah. So if you think that, if you think that's clear, the other, the other way is, is...
I don't care.
Is just ask for the whole amount. I mean, they're, they're, they're the same thing in the end, but to make it clear for...
I think if we, we put this in there, people are going to say, oh my God, they want this much money to put that through town.
Exactly, we say, like, no.
It is, it is. But they say, they want us to raise this, well, this, there is seen that we're using that money, and we can explain that pretty easy, that we use...
Can I still add thirty-one thousand or five hundred dollars to the top line here? Because we've already, we've already had that forty-six in the revenue.
But, but we're not going to be needing that to do anything like that. We won't, we won't have to...
Right now, it's just getting rolled in offset taxes, so it's great, it's part of that fifty-six thousand seven nine forty-seven. We just, as we have it through these years, put this up back in offset, so it needs to get raised in taxes, so...
So the twenty-six five is offsetting taxes, right?
So we'd have to take it out of offsetting taxes, which we... Which would lower the, lower the surplus. I mean, it's gonna raise the taxes if you buy that much either. If you add it to a line or subtract it from surplus lines, but yeah.
I think it'd just be easier just to let them know this is what we, and we're putting it in our write-up here that how much money we got and what we want to do with it. So I think just with that. So look, I think, do you, what do you have? I mean, I don't care, but.
I mean, if it was put in a specific fund to say that it was what we use for certain thing, then we wouldn't have to, you know, for it in the surplus. It wasn't. It's part of the surplus. And we're using it to roll over, to help reduce our taxes, but you can't use the same money to reduce your taxes and then also use it for the back. You can't use the same point six thousand dollars to do two different things. Shocking, huh? So this makes the bathroom sound cheaper. The budget is gonna, the taxes are gonna go up now at point six thousand if we.
Well, yes, but. But to roll that twenty-six, what we got for the sale, just into offsetting taxes. You still have a vote to do that. Because that's unencumbered money that we can't then just spend by ourselves. If we wanted to buy, I don't know, whatever we wanted to buy the point six thousand, we couldn't then just do that.
My only understanding of that is that. The, the only legal thing to do is to, is to give it back to the taxpayers, i.e. let it offset the taxes. I mean, that's why we've been doing this with surplus and previous years. Any, any surplus amount, the town shouldn't pay it off too, be it, I mean, coming from a tax sale or coming from unspent money.
That's absolutely correct, but I'm just saying that if we wanted to do something with that, other than this, we have to vote on it. We can't just spend it ourselves.
There's not really any difference in just saying, hey, townspeople, can we build a bathroom for this much money? I mean, you just kind of let go that you're attaching money from the land sale to the building of the bathroom because it really is all big money that they budgeted for or not.
I mean, that way makes the bathroom sound a little bit less expensive.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, it just, but it just doesn't let them think that we're raising that much money.
But we are.
But we are in it, yeah.
Maybe when you put it in, in either, either way, and then when you introduce the article in the meeting, explain that the money's already in it as their surplus. So we could be taking it out from bathroom. So that way they would know it would be coming back out.
What do you think?
We need to inform them of the total cost of the bathroom.
Oh, it is. It's put in the article.
In both of them.
One of them makes you add it up yourself, but.
Did you get a price on the bathrooms over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, Mike gets some figures up for it.
And that's just an estimate, it's not solids, so.
Natural Dimitri Hall.
Yeah.
He's volunteering his own labor for the construction.
So the, the price that we're asking for is to design the system, install the system, build a bathroom on the side of it, of the building. Which one do you want? Which, how do you want to do it?
Either way it works, but. I think using thirty-eight thousand, we only raised six thousand by spring. That have a good article is to see because.
I'd rather see it this way.
Because that, the other way makes it sound like we're only raising six thousand dollars when we're starting to actually raise. Because we've rolled it over, we've rolled the twenty-six thousand, it's already. Couple over the cost of taxes.
Either one.
Did you ever find a quick, so the one they already did?
No.
Did anybody ever call Michael Matties and ask him?
I believe Mike did. Mike did.
Really? And he said he don't have one.
They never had a design.
Did you see a design?
He designed it. Him and then the other one that designed it was. The first one was. Phil, what the hell was his last name? I'd have to look on the help, I just had him do one for a piece of property way up on Taylor Hill. Phil Savoy.
Savoy.
He was the first one that did it.
I don't know. Did he check with Savoy or did he just check with Marquis? I thought it was just Marquis.
Yeah. I thought that they, I thought there had been protest, but not a designer.
They did protest more time.
I don't know.
That may be able to.
Yeah, there's nothing filed with the state concerning the town garage and bathroom and separate system.
The second time they did it was when you were gonna build a new town hall like that.
Yeah, but that was gonna be a bigger system, wasn't it?
Gotta work for the guy in the town hall and the town hall.
Yeah, there's still nothing filed with the state.
So who did this, the one with, for the town office to? Marquis?
That was Marquis.
But didn't it come up to instead thirty-one, five, thirty-two?
Sorry, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I was sick, so I was just going on info that just passed on to me. I thought it was twenty-six thousand from the sale of the property plus five thousand five hundred.
Not to do the shower.
The shower, yeah.
So that, that's why.
Thirty-two. That's what I thought it was, thirty-two.
Okay, well, there you can change that.
Anything else we have to?
Do you have a reply? No, I forget. A proof letter that just goes in tonight.
I'll go to my, I'll give you have to approve the write-up somewhere. No, I'm still leaving. Taking your suggestions and I have some other brainwaves.
Okay.
Gonna be sure.
All right. I will make a motion that we. The budget. And if, do we want to put the figure in a four, four, five?
Can you repeat that?
I will make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the Budget Committee with a budget of four-hundred-and-five, nine-eighty-one, forty.
That's the taxes to be raised.
Taxes to be raised, but the total budget will be four-ninety-five, nine-twenty-eight, twenty-five, right?
No, the total budget is five-fifty-eight, four-seventy-nine, twenty-five, the bottom line.
Four-seventy-nine, what?
Five-fifty-eight, four-seventy-nine, and twenty-five cents.
For the total budget, but to be raised by taxes is four-hundred-and-five, nine-eighty-one, forty. Is there a second?
I'll second that. And that's just, that's just the budget, not including any articles that we add into it.
Photodocals, which is up there. All right. Anything else we need?
The budget we need to do the one.
Eighteen. Oh, that's what we need, eighteen. No, there's no nineteen in there.
Well, you got more?
I have.
So. We want, let's make a.
So on the list of town offices, we don't need to have.
School directors.
School directors and the title on the, the thing shouldn't say.
Shouldn't be the legal voters of the town of Athens and the Athens school district. So we need to cross out the Athens school.
Correct. David's making a copy, so we can just cross it off on the copy. This I need to take home, please.
Okay.
On this year, Darlene, are you gonna put in Steve Oak's phone number as town head officer? And there was something else.
You'll have to talk to my phone, that one, see this out.
Oh, okay. I guess it's not nothing.
Oh, yes.
So it should say warning of the annual.
We didn't bother to the town of Athens, are hereby.
Well, right at the very top, it should be one annual town, uh, town of Athens. Town meeting.
And we don't put the school district in.
Wipe out the school district.
Yep.
And then we wipe out end of the Athens town school district.
Annual meeting, you said, of the town of Athens?
I'll give this to you, darling. The legal voters of the town. And the date is.
Thirty.
The third. So Article one's the same.
Twenty.
One, yeah. So Article one's the same, Article two is the same. Article three would be the same. Article four is to elect all town. All town officers required by law. Article five would be to strike out school directors and the joint. So our five would be to authorize a select board, if necessar, to, to borrow money.
Respectively, if necessary.
Yeah, just to borrow money if necessary.
Yep. All right, the six would be the same.
Six is the same. Seven is the same.
We don't need eight. We don't need it.
Eight is gone. And.
So nine would be eight.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Okay.
Why don't we, can you read off the article there that we have there? Make, just make sure we got it all good.
What, for the school?
For the school. Put that in there for eight?
Yeah.
Okay. Want me to read it?
Yeah.
To see if the voters of the town of Athens will approve formation of a Athens School Advisory Commission consisting of three members to be appointed by the Athens Select Board to be called the Athens Advisor, Advisory Commission to advise the W N B U S U on budget facilities and other matters of interest.
On. On budget, what was the three things? On budget?
On budget facilities and other matters of interest.
Okay.
Is that reasonable to do? All right, so let's put that in as number eight. See how many dollars nine is sustained.
Ten we don't need because we're not.
Ten is L. Eleven is L. Twelve is L. And you have.
I do. You need to put in the article for.
The town.
Bathroom. Yes.
So do we want to make that Article ten or do we want to make that Article nine about the bathroom and then vote? Do you want to vote on the main budget or do you want to vote on the bathroom first?
Vote on the bathroom first, yeah.
All right, so the bathroom will be eight.
No, the bathroom will be nine.
Be nine.
And that will be ten.
And then not, the old nine will be ten.
Yeah.
And. HCRS, did we vote for HCRS last year?
Yes, we did.
Did we vote any of them down last year?
I don't believe so.
Freedom Center got money, Youth Services got money, South Korea got money.
We need to add Senior Solutions.
They weren't on there?
They weren't on there last year, but they are this year.
Did they give you a petition?
I know there's a petition because I signed it, I just gotta get it from the air.
Rapid Care's got it. All right, so let's put Senior Solutions. We'll put that after Rapid Care's. So. Fifteen, you probably know.
They wanted three hundred dollars.
All right, any other articles coming up?
Nope.
Or anything else you can think of that adds to what it came?
Do you have Youth Services in here?
Youth Services, I think, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, five fifteen, okay. Three hundred and thirty dollars? Yeah.
And so I'll make a motion that approve that as the warning.
So the school directors won't be here?
Nope.
Uh, that we approve that as a warning that Darlene, if she gets a petition enough people for article for. Service agency pushing funding that.
When's their deadline?
Twenty thousand.
Oh, so they have till five hundred twelve?
Yes. So if she can add that to it, contact us and add that to it. And then type it out, we'll come down here and sign it. We'll sign it here.
Yeah, just leave it on table.
On the, on the twenty-fifth, we'll sign it the twenty-fifth.
Is there a second? What is the motion again that we made?
Is to approve the, the warning as we discussed it. And that we will, Darlene may add the service agency if a petition comes in.
Okay.
And that we will sign the warning on the twenty-fifth. Without us, without a meaning of the.
And I turn this off and then we'll have.
Yeah, that, well, let's see the. Yeah, I got it.
Is there a second on that?
Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So we just take out the school?
Yeah.
And, we're gonna need auditor?
Yep.
Because Jimmy's still running out of... Actually, we do. No, we don't. It's your doing now.
Yeah, you have to, we're gonna have to put in, uh, specifically that Tom resigned and that...
Yeah, I've already given that.
That, that, that he resigned as auditor.
I didn't know about the school board, so I changed that.
Anything else with the warning on the budget?
Roads. Everything's holding its own, had a couple of hiccups with the little truck, a couple glitches, they got them worked out, hopefully. Uh, everything else has been going good, we're about a third of the warranty, right? Yep. And we're about a third to a half through our sand pile already. And, uh, other than that, everything's holding its own. I think before you got here, uh, we had, uh, compliments on, uh, smoothing up the roads. Uh, when there was some mud and much, and I've heard that, probably you don't, but I've also heard that about the long road there. Appreciate it. Nothing else. Nothing I can think of at this point.
You said the little truck is all set now?
Hopefully. It keeps the hydraulic pump, when it got the, when it had the issue with the wiring harness, they put a new hydraulic pump on it, well, it wasn't set to the pressure that it should, so it wasn't running the sander like it should, and they've got it all adjusted, they adjusted it once and then it messed up again, so they adjusted it the second time and hopefully it stays working long now.
Is it loose hydraulic fluid, is that why?
No, no, it's just in the electrical box for the sander, something keeps coming out of adjustment.
Um, roads. How's your call?
Good. Holding, we're staying, I think we're gonna stay with the new budget.
We're there, right?
Our warrants and mail.
Hey, hey Jimmy, it's a new year, so you could start this one and I'll start the other ones.
All right. Dunster in trouble? All right, Dunster in trouble?
Yep.
All right, so there is a, you can probably census.
The what?
There is a, actually, the census.
I told them to take it off.
Boundary changes and everything.
Well, that's there.
To be grown?
We did.
And the worst part is they changed all their papers.
You have to, if the town change or something, you have to, uh, let them know.
Just takes a while.
Is correct. This is a little issue there that, um...
All because part of the roads and the...
What's an issue?
It was an issue we had some time ago, but...
It's, it's been done now, it's been done for years.
Yeah.
I will make a motion that... I think that's a road, I don't know what it is, but... What is that? We've got three maps, so... Where are those?
Census.
Throw this map to off. Oh, maybe that's the same fire road. Okay, that's what I wondered, but it's great.
Yeah. I don't have to stand up.
Just classify it differently.
Well, they don't... Hold the sack. Is that... Marching for the road. Maybe that's what it means.
All right.
But they don't classify the road as the boundaries. So I'll make a motion that I sign this and we send this back.
Okay, so in what?
That we're signing the, uh, initial boundary, uh, validation program for the United States Department of Census.
Let's just run through.
You know, over here, there's census people listed for six feet fifty an hour on the town outside of the Henryville, about twenty bucks.
And that comes out of the penalty from the door?
Yeah.
And what's the interest for, for the door?
Uh, one percent.
Did I hear a second?
Give me a second to do it, all of the favor, aye. Send that back.
So did you just put this in with David?
What?
You have an envelope for this somewhere.
Did you put it in with this other check, is that why?
Yeah, it's not why, that's right.
Oh, we received the, did you keep that, the coefficient, the common level of appraisal? Or did you give that back to me?
We gave it back to you.
We received a notice from, uh, the state that we're at a hundred and eleven.
Point eighty-eight.
Uh...
Nice.
Common level of appraisal and our coefficient of dispersion is six...
Six point two eight?
Six point two eight.
Eight two. Six point eight two.
So that will not force a, a, uh...
Reappraisal.
Reappraisal.
Is that done on a yearly basis?
Yeah.
It could be different from a year, right?
Yeah, last year the CLA...
But it doesn't usually drop that much in a year.
No, the C I L, C L A last year was actually one oh nine.
It went up?
So we, so it went up, yeah, it's based on our sales.
Yeah. So we have eleven points to play with before it even gets below a hundred.
Yeah, and you have, uh, it can drop down to eighty before that. The state will come in and request a reappraisal.
Jimmy, you want the stamp?
He's handing it back to you.
Oh, thanks.
Am I supposed to do with it?
I think you just stamped the...
Just stamped everything, Jimmy, go crazy.
Always find it.
Well, here, just let me stamp these two, then you can have the rest.
It's like, more than a scan.
There you go.
So you just stamped the, the state?
Well, you don't just stamp them, you gotta make sure that they're correct.
Well, yeah, but you, once you know they're correct.
Do it upside down now.
Probably going to, yep.
It's the only way to do it, that's how we always do the first envelope, it's always upside down.
I used to process.
I don't like it, it'll force higher heat, when it goes off, it's cold, yes. Anything good?
Yeah, a couple things we need to talk about executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, there that is, the eleven, one, one-eleven, the, uh, common level of appraisal.
Do we file this somewhere?
Yeah, I have.
That's a different session next.
Yeah.
So do you want this?
You thinking about just coming down here and ripping this one out?
Corrected it, so.
Break it up, but it'll be a different.
Fifty one, huh?
No, generator. Nobody's ever here with power. They wouldn't know for at least a month or two.
You got a generator, you're saying extension cord. Well, it's all shut up, it's a little bit of a...
What is the generator? The town generator?
Yeah, I gotta get the carburetor cleaned, that's a little snarred.
You wanna want this one?
That one I got now, yeah, my old one. Shut the gas off.
To run it out?
Run it out, run out of gas, turn it on, and back to the tank, that'd be good.
So how'd you like any, any of that, power on after the second pass, which one did?
The other one had a little, well, valve come back on, you know, it's like it's, like it's, like it's, like it's... Then it went out and it kept flicking, 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 well. It wants to reset my generator because it took a while, took about five minutes for it to come back on and then start generating again. And Raymond did the same thing, because it flickered a little fat in the green.
Yep.
Then it couldn't keep up, so it just kicked it off.
Kicked it off, kind of like a safety feature.
Well, it kicked it off until it figured out what it was doing, then it...
Do you wanna read this over for...
You put that seat hold in the gas? Use that seat hold in the car?
Yeah, the other thing I...
Well, it's empty of gas now, it just, it's got to pull the carburetor off and then it'll back together. Off in Chester, it's all... That's where our pump, the ninety...
Oh, I see what you're saying, so... Two be picked up, got it.
Solid waste being...
Yeah.
Politically correct, it's being solid waste instead of saying...
Yeah, it takes more fuel to make ethanol than what we save.
So Darlene, I will do up a, uh, I'll clean this up and I'll mail it to you.
Now, there was one down in college, yeah.
Okay.
For maybe this, this is as usual, right, until next day in June.
Okay.
And that's what we'll read on for the article twenty-sixth of the doctrine.
That's in the Article Eight.
He has to build a garage first.
Yeah, God help us, I was, I was home for twelve days with Sandy over Christmas, great.
Oh my God, you're still alive.
Just barely. Lucy, there are reasons why I don't probably want to.
All right. To move things along, uh, while we're still looking at some things here, um, I will make a motion that we go into executive session, reference a legal matter, where premature public knowledge would put the town of Athens as at a substantial disadvantage and Darlene can stay Sandy and I'd ask that Matt stay as well. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.